Ms. Colder. Mr. Kelly. Mr. Colder.
Here.
Mr. Mack.
Here.
Ms. Paul Stini.
Here.
Mr. Robinson.
Here. All right, can we stand up and say it please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, do we have, anyone signed up to speak this evening?
It's Mr. Carl Bombazana.
Mr. Carl Bombazana. Good evening, Board. I don't recognize you when you're blue because you normally have your red on. I just say here, obviously, this space, thank you for support with the village. You yourself, Mr. President, and trustee Colth, trustee Cal, and full stream, you guys are awesome. We had great support with the village. You know, trustee Colth was out in Monsoon taking down the parking signs, open up the one-way streets. It was outstanding. We obviously had a good year. We lost some time on Sunday. But it was really well. I have to give special thanks to Chief Thompson and his team. Next, all deserve, the police presence, outstanding. I had so many people come up to me commenting how they felt safe. And I'm not just saying that, I mean, because he's leaving. I'll stay now. But with the OEM team that everybody organized, it was a wonderful, wonderful feeling that I had people responding constantly on there. So again, I want to just say thank you. We appreciate all the help that we can get. And hopefully, we're going to do it again next year. FYI, this will be August 10th through the 13th of next year. Thank you. Anyone else?
That's it, let's see.
Before you, you have the meeting minutes from August 18, 2022. Please review them at this time. Also, any discussions about the format of the minutes? You know, we kind of had a change and maybe it's been going well. Any other comments, concerns about the format? We're still good? Awesome. Are there any changes? Here it goes. I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes as they are presented. So, whoa. Questions, comments? Let's go.
Mr. Kelly. Mr. Colder.
Hi.
Mr. Mack.
Hi.
Ms. Paul Stini.
Hi.
Mr. Robinson.
Hi.
Ms. Colder.
Hi.
What should I say, Mr. CEO?
Well, we are, we're going to present Chief Thompson with some praise, and this is what I beg him to say. His family's here, as you guys know. Chief Thompson is retiring. We've talked about it, beat it to death. I'm sure he's getting sick of hearing it every single meeting, but he told us too soon, I guess. I'm kidding, I'm kidding. We're really, we're really going to miss you. And with that, we've got a couple of awards for you this evening. First. First, we'd like to congratulate you on your retirement. Come out. Congratulate you on your retirement, your 41 years to the law. It'll be good on your mantle, so you can show all your friends.
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. But you're going to have to, like, pose with both of them.
Ah, I'm such a camera hound. You're setting the pace of town scale.
We haven't done this since 2020, I believe.
Second only.
This is second only. We'd like to present you with the honorary lifetime citizen award for the village. And so you're the second recipient of this. And like I said, you mean a lot to me and a lot to this village.
Appreciate it.
You have to pose with both awards on each hand.
Sure.
Ms. Colder, trustee Colder loves to take pictures with the awards.
I'm very glad you took that down and get the picture.
We'll get plenty of pictures.
I just need to get you. He's new.
I'll get in there, Sherry.
I'll wait till he gives you my stuff then.
Hurry up.
The smile goes away. One with the mayor?
Yeah, I know. Sure. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Can the board have anything they'd like to add or say before he gets out of here? This is his last board meeting, so he has to say a whole thing.
You're on top.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, Mr. Board, for you to go forward, especially to all of the citizens. They kept me. I didn't, you know, I always kept. So, good feeling. Good ride here for you. Wish everybody continued success. There's anything to add to it?
How about the bucket next year up at the 30th grade?
This time, right? How are you with the weed wagon?
Do you have any nice little thoughts on your hobby? Do you get to say something?
Yes. I just want to tell you, I've only been on this board a little over a year, but I've worked with law enforcement for, you know, well, over a decade in my history. But I want to say that you are not just the chief of the police department. You've partnered with this community, and I sensed that as soon as I came in, is that not only were you respected, but you were a part of the team and not just the head of the police. Those, that was your team, and you worked alongside them. And I just wanted to just share with you that it's been an absolute pleasure working with you. And you have been an excellent woman, an excellent chief of this field.
Thank you. I appreciate that very much. Yeah. Yes.
I would echo that. I've known you for a couple of years on this board. But I've known you beyond, and I just want to thank you for your friendship, for all that you've done for the community. I sincerely look forward to seeing you outside of the uniform at the community events. You will, where we continue to mingle and.
And volunteer and be a part of it. So I'm looking forward to that.
Is this police chief a volunteer?
I mean, I was supposed to get paid?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Anyone else? Will anybody from the crowd want to embarrass them with any stories? I did come across a video, the Hampshire High School class of 1991, their yearbook video. And I thought about bringing it in and showing it, but you're a very active part of that, that video in the very beginning of it. You were, seems to be like fake arresting a student and chubbing him.
In 1992, he also did it for most likely to be arrested. He was, he had it, yeah, the picture in there, yes.
Most likely to be arrested in 1992?
He was a prob.
Yeah, I was the guy that was arrested. I do recall those. So, pretty neat. I'll get it to you.
I got the 1992 picture.
You guys don't say you've been here a couple of years without leaving, all the info.
Yeah. A long time. A long time.
Forty-some years.
He's smiling still.
Well, he gave my husband a ticket.
Hey, he's fine. I have to say, we go to Coon Creek days, and he walks around. I can't tell you the number of people that come up and shake his hand. And Chief Thompson, you gave me my first ticket.
Nobody got off.
That guy in the motorcycle from a few weeks ago, did that be my other guy?
It's too fresh.
I appreciate it, and I'm really going to miss you. Help me around?
Yep.
I will be around. Thank you very much.
Okay, with that, Mr. Mayor, just getting out of this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't, it almost seemed like we're pushing him out the door, but the next thing on the agenda. Didn't really plan it that way. But you have on the screen up here on the lower right is Rick Genex. I believe that trustee Paul Stini is history with Rick and knows Rick. So Rick is with Gov HR, and he'll be our lead recruiter for the search. And he has also with him his associate that will be working with him. So I'm going to let Rick take over, and he's going to go through the recruitment process.
Thank you, Jay. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. It's a pleasure being in front of you tonight, President Reed and trustees. I have a short presentation tonight as to why work with Gov HR and this excellent organization. And I also provided a timeline for the board members to look at. Assisting me on this recruitment was going to be a former colleague of mine and a new colleague of mine, Bob Marshall. Bob was the former police chief in Naperville and retired last July. And Bob also served as the assistant village manager in Naperville. So, why Gov HR? We're a certified woman-owned business founded in 2009. We have 20 full-time employees, six permanent part-time employees, and 25 project consultants. And we work exclusively with local governments and organizations that work with local governments. Gov HR is based in Northbrook, and we have satellite offices in 12 states. Next slide, please. So, our philosophy, working with Gov HR, is service. We partner with you through the entire process of the recruitment integrity. We deliver our services thoroughly. We do it on time and professionally. And we really encourage you to go out and talk to any of our previous clients to get a feel of how they felt about using us. Trust, we will definitely provide you with an honest assessment of the candidates. You know, we will let you know how we feel about them. Respect, we're very well regarded in local government, in the executive recruitment professions, which helps us bring credibility to our process. As you can see from the slide here, we have consultants located throughout the country. And as I spend some time in North Carolina, as well as in Illinois, I work with some organizations that are in that state. And since 2009, Gov HR has been engaged in about 850 recruitments in over 41 states. As you can see, 28% of our clients are repeat customers. And of those repeat customers, we have 46% who've done more than two recruitment processes with Gov HR. We have 32 consultants that bring a unique combination of our experience in recruitment and in serving managers in all disciplines of local government. When I was a village manager, I used them, in three organizations, I must have used them five to six times. And I was also recruited for my last village manager position with Gov HR. Since 2018, Gov HR has done 47 police chief recruitments in 11 states. 20 of those have been specifically in Illinois. Some of those include Arlington Heights. I'm presently involved in the Buffalo Grove recruitment, Evanston, Lyle, Naperville, Northbrook, Oak Park, Peoria, Schaumburg, and Villa Park. So, the process, we really tailor the process to meet your needs. We will do stakeholder outreach and then develop a position announcement and recruitment brochure that's, that's really tailored to your needs. It's a recruiting tool that's widely emailed and posted on our website. And we place position announcements on all our social media and all the professional organization websites. And I believe I had shared with manager budgets already, the ad source list that we will be sending this recruitment out to. So, we will do a candidate outreach in a recruitment to potential candidates. Not only will we post it, but we will also use email, telephone calls. A lot of us have personal contacts. We include outreach through our social media and development of our database that we have. And we heavily utilize our LinkedIn software. And we also target the surrounding states that we feel are going to help in this recruitment. You can see by the numbers here, Gov HR has, we really have 14,000 visits each month to our website. We have 7,000 subscribers. We post on Facebook, Instagram, and Twitter, as well as social, other social media sites. And Gov HR has a database of over 9,500 management-level individuals across the country, as well as 20,000 LinkedIn contacts. But one of the things we're really proud of is our commitment to communication, always being accessible through telephone or email to this process. I know Jay and I have talked, I think, about five times already, and Mayor Reed and I have talked already. So we maintain regular contact with our liaisons, which will be the village manager and the village president, and provide regular updates as far as the timeline is concerned. And then, once the process is done, we will follow up with the candidates afterwards. So we stay with you until you select the person who you feel is going to fit the position. And if we feel, if you feel that we have not, or the people who have applied haven't met your requirements, we will continue to go out and look for that individual. And of course, we offer a one-year guarantee for all of our candidates, and that is not a, anymore as far as a cost to your organization. One other thing, as I stated, we, I had supplied you the timeline of the recruitment, and I hope that provides a good picture of how we're going to conduct this recruitment for Hampshire. And I'll take any questions if you have any.
Or have any questions about this and our timeline process?
I just wanted to know, when you come out and working with village manager and talking to them about the needs, et cetera, and then meeting with the police department and the members there, do you physically come out and have that conversation?
What we really do is, most of the stakeholder interviews, and we will be, we will be speaking to all the board members as well, will be via Zoom, and we will be able to get a good feel through that. That's how we conduct them. What we will do is, as far as, once the individuals are selected, myself and my colleague will come out and meet with the board individually in a closed session to discuss those candidates, and then the board can decide on what candidates they want to move forward in the process.
So, one of the things is that we're looking at the timeline. It's just something to be cognizant of. Those of that have been on the board for a while know that when we did the first, the few rounds of interviews for the village manager, we typically conducted them on Saturday mornings because everybody works, you know. So, if you look at our timeline, you know, we would be, you know, I could imagine, like, some of the reviewing of the candidates could happen at a board meeting or something of that nature, but I'm guessing rounds of the interviews are that, but they have to happen on Saturday. So as you look at the schedule, I would try to just be cognizant of that as you try to plan around December. I know that's a tough time for everybody because of holidays and all that other stuff, but, you know, if we want to be, we want to go true to the deadline that we'd set for ourselves, just be cognizant of that as you start planning events that we're probably going to have some Saturday.
Yes, just one question for you, sir. Once you've completed the stakeholder interviews, and if you've covered this, I apologize.
That's right.
Going to a board meeting with the synthesized finding of what that ideal candidate is based on all the stakeholder feedback? We have an understanding of what, what qualities in a candidate you are looking for based on.
Excuse me. What we will do is, we will prepare a draft announcement, as well as a draft brochure that we'll share with the manager and the village president to share with all of you. Nothing will go out until it's approved and everyone sees it. So, once it's approved by whoever, we'll post it. But we really don't come out, you will see the synthesization in the brochure, in the ad, the way it's listed.
Thank you. Give me a quick look.
Will you be conducting the stakeholder interviews individually or as a group?
So, we've kind of identified, excuse me, we've kind of identified the stakeholders preliminarily. 90% of them will happen on a one-to-one, one-on-one with, you know, so like, as far as the board members are concerned, that would be individual as far as. But if there is, we had talked, I don't want to get too far out in front of things, but we had talked about maybe department heads, certain department heads could meet together because they collaborate a lot with each other, you know, and to be cognizant of their time as well. So, I mean, again, if there is a want, as we start to schedule interviews for, if there's a want to kind of group two trustees together, I think we're allowed to do that, you know, we can do that if you wanted, or if you want to want to. Okay, any other questions? All right, thank you, sir, for being here and walking us through this.
Pleasure.
Everybody, you're free to go.
Thank you very much. Have a great evening. Great board meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With that, we would ask, let me first introduce and say that the next two items are both summarizing an agenda supplement of Mr. Ray and Packett on page 20. And so first, we would ask for consideration of a resolution approving a final plat of subdivision for the Prairie Ridge Neighborhood R. This will be, I'm going to let Josh introduce this, and the people online will speak to it.
You, so Neighborhood R is another town home neighborhood that Crown is looking to move to next. It's very similar to Neighborhood M. It's going to be 80-unit townhomes. Major difference is that instead of single ownership, this would be a build-to-rent community. And online, we have Dan Olson and Chris Nats from Crown that you've met before, as well as Chris Lester, who's a land manager for D.R. Horton. And Chris has a presentation that he's going to share a little bit about their, that side of their company that does the build-to-rent, and then also, you know, the type of product that we're going to be building.
Also, we have Mr. Brian Rock here from planning and zoning. Mr. Rock, we might call on you for some insight. Chris, are you with us, Mr. Lester?
I'm here. Thank you.
Okay, I'll put your presentation up now.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Thank you all for having us here tonight. I'm excited to talk to you about the latest platform that D.R. Horton has to offer, DHI Residential, which is our build-to-rent communities that we're offering now across the United States. DHI Residential launched in 2019 to meet growing demand for single-family rental opportunities. D.R. Horton's motto is "A Home For Every Stage Of Life", and we saw more and more opportunities and more and more instances where you had people that were interested in the dream of the single-family home lifestyle, but weren't necessarily able to achieve it just yet. So, we've started developing these communities, which offer essentially all the benefits of a single-family community, whether attached or detached, but it's got a reduced commitment and a lower cost of entry compared to homeownership, which is something that's crucial more and more these days as interest rates climb and more and more people are starting to come out and explore the idea of living out in different neighborhoods. So, all of our homes are built just the same as D.R. Horton for sale communities. For instance, as the board and everyone is certainly aware, we are, we are just starting to build our townhomes in Pod M at Prairie Ridge. These townhomes will look the same, feel the same from the exteriors as those in Pod R. The only difference will be the management structure and the owner structure. It will be professionally managed and maintained. Oftentimes, it's onsite staff, but it will have a community manager that's there. The lease-up will be managed by a professional management company, and they will be responsible for all the landscaping of not only the exterior of the buildings, but also be responsible for the interior maintenance of the communities as well. So, all the rent, the people living in the homes, everything is taken care of by the same ownership group. So. We've, the rental communities, as it says, offers a greater diversity in housing stock to any area because it provides a new opportunity for people to get into the area, for somebody that may not be able to just yet afford the new home purchase of their own. They're developed and managed as one single community, not individual homes. The community is treated as one whole entity. We, what we do on these is we build all of the units, we lease them up, and then we sell them to an entity that will own and maintain it as a single entity, as a single community. Just to give you guys a little bit of what we've seen so far, we're still relatively new to this. It started in 2019. But so far, what we've seen, our typical resident, 30, late 30s, early 40s, half of them identify as being married and have one dependent. A lot of them have at least one pet, and what we're seeing more and more is, are the incomes for the people that utilize these communities has actually been greater, greater than average of the household income in that market area. So, it's an interesting thing to see there. It's not people that, it's people that are looking for more flexibility and more opportunities usually, so. The communities provide the space that, you know, you wouldn't necessarily get from apartment. It's kind of a step up between apartment and a homeownership group. What we're seeing, a lot of it too, and we have, we're new to this in the Chicagoland area, but we have certainly seen this in our own communities where you have people that have rental units already. You'll see people that come out, or will come into our sales office looking to buy a home, and will say, you know, I wasn't really sure of, you know, if I wanted to live out here. It felt it was far from work. It felt far from, you know, different opportunities. Or I wasn't sure if I was really interested in living in a townhome that had so many stairs. I've been living in, I've been renting this one for the last six months, and I love every second of it, and I really want to take that step and would like to progress into owning my own rather than continuing to pay rent. So we're seeing a more of that. And then, a lot of it too, especially as we are attracting a younger demographic, you have a whole generation of buyers now that are not interested in the, for lack of a better term, you know, I can certainly appreciate from a personal level, the trials and tribulations of homeownership, the maintenance, the upkeep, the, you know, having to fix things on their own in the home. They're more interested in experiences. They're more interested in other things outside of that. DHI community will, residential community will offer the opportunity to have the single-family experience, but none of the responsibilities necessarily take care of it because somebody else is doing that for them. One of the, from the exterior, there's, there'd be no difference in these townhomes and what you'd see over in Pod M. The only difference in this really would be from an interior standpoint, you would have, these are geared more towards having all hard surface flooring throughout rather than carpeted areas, stone countertops, all appliances are included, including washer dryer, all the smart home features, and then security monitoring is provided for by the management company as well. So, it's a little bit even stepped up on the interior in order to maintain the integrity and the overall appearance of the community. So, and this, if you could at all read it. So, and this, if you could at all read it, provide some of the details that I kind of went through. It's some examples inside of what, you know, what we provide, the hard surface flooring throughout. This shows granite countertops, but there's also quartz countertops in some units as well. The smart home features, the baths, the bedrooms, just kind of giving you an overall for the fit and fin, easy for me to say, the fit and finish of the units themselves. Every unit has a two-car garage as part of it, just as the townhomes do. This is covering our communities overall, so the individual backyards is clearly for a single-family type of situation. But the professionally managed landscaping would certainly be the, be here. And then this one, community amenities, we do that oftentimes when we are incorporating it into a part of a larger master plan community that we are developing. In this instance, we're merging in with the Prairie Ridge community itself, so the amenities are part of the overall Prairie Ridge plan itself. This is a community we did in Georgia, just gives you an overall picture. This is kind of a national deck that we have. Some other examples that are in here are all communities that are throughout the United States. You know, you see some examples of some single families, you see some examples of some townhomes there. Those show one-car garages, but we're talking two-car garages here. Think that's about it as far as, those are ones you can see in other markets. As far as where we are in Chicago right now, our communities are still in the development stages. We have a community in Pingery Grove just down the road that is currently under development that will have a build-to-rent program as part of it. We have another program in Northwest Indiana that is currently under development as well, and we have three or four other ones in the planning stages in addition to Pod R, which we are rolling out across the Chicagoland area. So I think that's all I have really to go. It's kind of my set remark, so I appreciate everybody's time and looking forward to continuing to be part of Hampshire.
Does anyone have any questions about the presentation? Yes, Mr. Coe.
Frankly, you drive by it and never know that they're rentals. Never see a for rent sign on the building. One unit for rent, they have a website. Sorry, I'm having a little trouble with my voice tonight. But they're maintained very well. You would never know that they're rentals, that they're scattered among the buildings. They're not, they're not all the same. There's a, there's a picture of that in your back. So very, very good maintenance. I also like to add, this is something I've probably put forward several times over the last two years, some of you more than others. Thank you. That's existing. But build-to-rent is really a trend nationwide. It's something I've been studying since I've been here and I've been sharing some of these articles with all of them. It's really a way for young people, millennials, particularly in this demographic, to get homeownership with flexibility, not be locked into a long-term mortgage and also maybe not have the funds to do it now. It's a real trend, and I think as we see this housing market slow down, which is very surprising as we're going to see, the rental market will be the next step. That's where people will go. So I think this is, this is really the future and what we prepare.
It sounds like that management company is doing a great job.
Yes.
For the gentleman that just did the presentation from D.H.
Right.
When you're looking to sell off this block, is there one or two companies that you typically are doing business with that you have a history of? Or is it an open bid? How does that process work?
We've been putting this out for, you know, we basically, across the country, have been doing this where it is essentially an RFP process. What we have been seeing is, and the people that are involved in this are primarily, you know, large institutional investors, right, that you're buying eighty townhomes, you're buying a hundred single-family homes, whatever it is. It's a, it's a, it's a significant investment and significant purchase, so you're looking at large-scale investors. The, from what I've been told, and the actual disposition process takes, takes out of, comes out of Arlington. So my information on it is primarily anecdotal, so take it from what that is. But I, we have been seeing the same bidders that come in from multiple dispositions.
Okay, and then for the properties that you currently have, and you, you've shared some nationally, right, whether they're from the southeast or out west. Is the business model always to sell to another company once the development is done and that company takes on the management? Or are there any of those properties that D.H. Horton themselves continues to manage?
To date, we have sold every single one that we've had.
Right, so it's not, and then my final question, apologies. We have our township assessor here. My question to you is, since these are billed to rent, is the property tax done as a rental income property versus a single ownership? Or how is that different in this type of community versus a townhome you would sell and it's individually?
Well, some people do do the income approach, they don't, we just kind of go by how much they sell for. Obviously, these are being sold, it sounds like chunks.
As one.
There's one chunk, so like however that much is worth. But there also is the income approach that actually most places don't. Some towns doing, their leader does it, but not a whole lot do it. But you could go that route and kind of start to charge for rents.
So if there's, if there's eighty units in this, they're sold as a package of eighty units, one bill of sale. Are they going to be assessed and receive property tax individually as what the individual unit value is? Or is it going to be whatever that sale price is evenly divided by eighty?
We really don't, yeah, I mean, it's, I think if I saw, I, I think these are, there's a parcel number for each one, I believe. Yeah, point zero three acres. So it's whatever, it'd be like whatever they sell the whole unit for, divided between how many townhomes are on there and that each one gets a little says value, and that just depends on how much it sells for.
And if they were individually sold, the assessed value is?
So there's one property tax bill then that's going to go to the owner of the company?
As far as I know, they're all separated out. As far as we got the sale or the division, they're all separated and with the sale of the point zero three acres for each one.
So there's a parcel number for each piece of property?
Each property.
The individual, the, the first neighborhood was done that way. We're not sure how this.
Oh, this, yeah, okay.
This is the second?
This is, yeah. Oh, okay. Well, the first one I got was all individually.
Because those, those were sold individually to, to people there. That was not a build-to-rent situation. That's why I was trying to figure out.
This was by, by, by D.R. Horton, which is, who's saying this is the first.
So D.R. Horton has proposed to purchase both pieces. So the first piece was individually by unit.
Yes.
Each building is divided into like, let's say, six pieces, and each one receive a pin and their own property tax bill. In this case, my expectation is not.
Then they would all, if that's, if that's one pin, one parcel, that's how it would be.
And in, in your professional opinion, how does that potentially affect the property tax value for this? One pin versus eighty?
I, 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 I mean, I don't really know.
No, I appreciate that. I just, I have no idea about it, that's why.
No, that's okay. No, that's okay. I mean, I, I was, you know, so they bought like, you know, like the one, I think we just all even out, you know. This would be, this would be the whole, but then you'd have your little individual one.
And that's why I asked if the value of the one, it would be the same as the sum of individual? If it's the same, then it's a wash, and it really doesn't matter. But if it's a significant difference, that's why I'm asking that question.
So Rutland Township will be doing the other one that we talked about in Pingery Grove. Is the one in Pingery Grove, is that also done the way this is as one unit? Or is the Pingery Grove one done by building with, you know, six units in it?
It's, it would be different. There will be individual lots, but that one is going to be a detached single-family. So it's different.
But I thought you said that one in Pingery Grove on forty-seven and.
No, that's a similar building.
Okay, that's different. Okay.
We've also got along seventy-two. There, it's two people, now people rent those two, if people buy them, they have rentals. We're individual person.
I think this is something that's needed, like, I mean, we listen to some realtors in town and you hear on the news about millennials not wanting to buy homes, and there's a housing shortage. I think that the rental, or build, build-to-rent rather, seems like a decent concept that's catching on across the country. And I agree with some of the professionals in that, in that realm. I don't think that we should move this all over the village for all, for every development that we do now moving forward. But at the same time, I don't think it's something that we shouldn't give our toll. That's my, my thought. Any other thoughts or questions?
I have a couple more. The putting in of the new street that's done by you then as part of the development, that Town Place Road?
Now, just on both streets, development will be doing the development work.
Okay.
We'll be having reconstruction here with them next Wednesday.
Okay, so just your crown, the, the way that Crown does it is Crown owns a property, they put in all the infrastructure, all the roadway, all the lights, all the plumbing, all the storm drains, everything, and then sell the lots off individually or in this case in a group. And the use would be for the rental.
Okay, so we're just looking at then just the, is it the fourteen buildings and that street? There's a spot just north, north of it, almost up into Allen Road, and it says lot two, and I'm trying to see here, is that going to be open space?
I can answer that, Mr. Mayor. This is Dan Olson with Crown. That's actually, that's our, that's actually a berm along Allen Road. It's a buffer berm. If you drive out there today, that berm is actually already completed. It's been completed since two thousand and six. Heavily landscaped. The landscaping is very mature at this point. It's been maintained up until that point. That will be owned and maintained by Horton when they close with us.
Backing to one step further than, than looking at that same map where it's lot three, that's going to be where Wyndham, it's going to be on the east side of Wyndham then. That says lot, lot two there. I was just open space right now because I'm looking at the exist, there's existing homes on the ones on State Street that are part of this map. That's why I'm trying to figure out if those are.
Right, that, that is a park that'll be servicing this community.
For lot three there or the?
Lot, lot three is a park, yes.
By the homeowners association.
I was just going to ask, is community park maintained by the homeowners association or something that it gives to the park?
It'll be, Chris could probably answer better than I can, but it'll presumably be maintained by the same property manager maintaining the open space around the the buildings and the berm and the other open space areas.
It'll be part of the eighty-unit community and maintained as part of the overall community plan.
So that, that other lot then just north of it that doesn't have a number on that, that's still part of the Crown development then? But that won't be sold to the, that belongs to the?
There's four open space parcels, the, the berm, the number, the first parcel one is the open space around the buildings themselves. Parcel two is the berm along Allen Road, as I just discussed, and then there's a, a skinny open space parcel adjacent to Wyndham Lane that is just a buffer to the property that we don't own to the east. And then there's the park would be the fourth open space parcel. All of those parcels will be sold to D.R. Horton, and they will maintain those through their property management company.
So, and then the other parts, I mean, looking at that as a square where the park is and, and so, those other three then, those are existing homes that are not part of the development because it says it's not subdivided.
Yes, I'm sorry. The, so just to the north of that, that square park, that is property we do not own. It's currently being farmed. To the east of it, there's actually a residence, residences there, which we do not own their property, obviously, either of those properties. To the south is property we do own, preliminary plat anticipates that to be commercial at some point in time.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Any other questions? So before you, you have a resolution approving the final plat of subdivision for Prairie Ridge neighborhood R. You can review that. We also again have Mr. Brian Rock here for any questions because again, this is a thing. So just, do anyone, does anyone have any questions about the actual resolution?
That's just to grant the easement, that's all?
No, this is, this is approving the plat of subdivision for, for neighborhood R.
Your, your.
There's two.
So hearing no questions, I will entertain a motion to approve resolution twenty-two dash oh nine, a resolution approving the final plat of subdivision for Prairie Ridge neighborhood R. At first, I have a second. Any other questions or comments about the resolution?
One final question, Wyndham Lane will go into Town Place Road and will become a thoroughfare for that community that over the state.
Dan?
Yeah, so Wyndham Lane, there is a right-in, right-out onto Allen Road. Since it is a right-in, right-out, we already have that access from KDOT. Since it is a right-in, right-out, we needed a connection to Town Place Road so that residents can, can go, can get into their community coming from the east on Allen Road.
Okay, so will connect into Town Place Road, which means Town Place will now connect into homes and become a thoroughfare to. Okay, thank you.
Instead of being the road to nowhere.
Right, yes.
Speaking of roads, I have a question about the French Harmony Road. How, I see it's on the plan here. How far is that road going to extend with your plan?
Give an idea. That, that road will be constructed by King County. It eventually will tie into, the, the plan is to eventually tie into French Road south of town. And then obviously Harmony Road north of town. It, it will be a very expensive road to build. It's got a bridge that's got to go, go over both the railroad tracks and the, and the creek, Hampshire Creek. I do know it's, it is on KDOT's, King County's Crips program, so they are collecting impact fees that can go toward that improvement. But as far as when that road will be built, I, I, you'd have to talk to the county on that. I know it's, I know it is a priority for them.
So that's like a myth.
Right, so it's not involved in this project? There will be no road where French Harmony Road is on your plot?
No, our, our role here is, is just to provide, to dedicate that, that right-of-way to King County so that they can build that road at some point in time.
Thank you. Anyway, all right, so I have for a second, any other questions, comments, concerns? Ms. Clerk, you can go, please.
Mr. Coe.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Mr. Fuller.
Hi.
Mr. Robinson.
Hi.
Mr. Mr. Matt.
Hi. Next, we have the dedication reasons. The resolution accepting the grant of easement for public utility purposes in Prairie Ridge development. Resolution twenty-two dash ten. Do you want to have any questions about that resolution?
Is, is it just in one spot? I mean, I'm looking at that and I'm not sure what page this actually is. But it's got the little triangles where it says easement. Primarily, that's what we're looking at?
I can speak to that, yeah. What, what that is, there's a, a storm drain, a storm line that's serving Wyndham Lane, it's, you know, endless off of Wyndham Lane that needed to be tied into an existing storm lane, a storm, storm line on Wyndham or Town Place Road. To do that, it had to tie into a manhole that was out of an easement, so we had to add an easement for that location.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions about this? I'll entertain a motion to approve resolution twenty-two dash ten, accepting a grant of easement for public utility purposes in the Prairie Ridge development. Questions, comments? Ms. Clerk, you go, please.
Mr. Matt.
Hi.
Mr. Paul Stewart.
Hi.
Mr. Robinson.
Hi.
Mr. Fuller.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Mr. Coe.
Hi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Dan and both Chris's. We appreciate it. Welcome to the town of D.R. Horton.
Thank you.
Thank you all, and congratulations, chief.
With that, we would ask for your, the resolution approving the final plat of subdivision for Hampshire 90 Logistics Park. You, you've all seen this, uh, project before in the concept phase. And you have, we have with us tonight Kenneth Franzisi, uh, who's a principal, uh, for this project, Hampshire Logistics Park, uh, to answer the questions you might have.
Hi, welcome. Good evening.
This is the part where, if you recall, we have Vista Trucking will be the primary, the first property. I have any other questions? We might have one for you, actually.
Excellent. Love that. Yeah, we've got, we've got a couple of groups, um, that are looking at it out of El Grove primarily. And that one out of Bensonville, but we're not to start along with them as we are with Vista Trans, so.
Just two to make sure I'm reading it right. We're talking about the property between 20 and 990, correct?
So this is south of I-90.
Right.
And if you know where the water tower is, so it's basically the property right in front of the water tower. The access road will, uh, where northern park is to the southwest, you know, gas road. It'll be aligned with that and then it'll go and be the whole second.
That was my second question because the drawing looks like the gas road offset, they don't align, but you're saying they'll align.
They align, yeah.
Yes, alright. Uh, lot five on your drawing, is that just for stormwater management? I think is what it says.
Yep.
I saw the road doesn't make it all the way to there. I'm like, yeah, I wonder if that's just for detention.
Yes, and the, the clarity on too about the, the gas road not aligning, the, the right of way dedicated on a gas road was very offset. That's why it doesn't look like it aligns for the south currently, but they'll align. Yes, the roads actually will align. The right of way doesn't.
Any other questions? And I'll entertain a motion to approve, um, resolutions 22 dash 11. Resolution approved by the subdivision for the Hampshire 90 Logistics Park. So. Questions, comments?
Just one quick question. That parcel four, if I remember, was that all going to, nothing to be built on it? That was all going to be the, um, just open space?
Parcel four is the one on the front, sorry, on the plane, right? Yes, yes, like the L shape.
Right, yeah, right when they come in.
That's strictly a stormwater pond as well.
Okay, okay.
Any other questions? Hearing none, Ms. Clerk, can you call girl please?
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Mr. Coth.
Hi.
Mr. Matt.
Hi.
Ms. Paul Stini.
Hi.
Mr. Robinson.
Hi.
Ms. Fuller.
Hi.
Motion pass zero.
Thanks for coming this evening.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate all your help. I'm glad to get some stuff built.
Thanks, thank you. Thank you, Mary Lee. With that, Mr. Mayor, we would ask for consideration of a motion to authorize pay estimate number three, in the amount of 159,354 dollars and cents to align these contractors for their work on Street State project. That will bring the total payment today to 722,777 dollars. Total project cost is 1 billion, 24,000.
Okay, does, uh, anybody have any questions about the estimate number three?
I have one from page 44. Um, the very last item is the post clock assembly complete and didn't have anything down there yet.
Yeah, it's not done yet.
Okay, is that they kind of did, and then they take you down?
Actually, the contract was, the subcontractor was very accommodating. They put the clock in for us. It was not rebuilt yet, but we haven't done the work we're going to do ourselves. Turning it to LED. Um, so they were nice enough to install it, dedication, and it'll be coming down, going up, uh, two, three weeks. And come back.
Okay.
So be prepared for that on baseball time if it was missing.
Darn kids.
It is, it is on camera 24 hours a day.
Alright, I will entertain a motion to authorize estimate number three to align contractors for the Street State project.
Second.
Questions, comments?
One last, I apologize. Um, I'm not sure what page this is, but it says that the net change orders zero.
To date.
To date, but we didn't have things that were done.
There will, will be a little.
Okay, that's.
There's still, still roughly $300,000 outstanding.
Okay, so then they're not, the change orders will come later, okay. Ms. Paul Stini.
Hi.
Mr. Matt.
Hi.
Mr. Coth.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Ms. Fuller.
Hi.
Mr. Robinson.
Hi. Thank you. With that, Mr. Mayor, we'd ask for consideration of a motion to authorize the final pay estimate in the amount of 4,868.25 cents to IHC construction for work on the Rock 72 Water Main Replacement Project. This is the final payment and this project gets finished under progress. Some of you may recall that we had a little trouble with the contractor cleaning up at the end, but it came back and made it right.
Well, I, I don't have any questions about this. I'm just happy that, uh, the project is, uh,
We had breaks that many, like, twice a year, at least.
I'll entertain a motion to authorize final payment to IHC. Questions, comments?
Mr. Robinson.
Hi.
Ms. Paul Stini.
Hi.
Mr. Matt.
Hi.
Mr. Coth.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly. Ms. Fuller.
Hi.
Motion pass zero.
Okay, next you'll see on the agenda that we have our regular monthly reports. Please review them at this time. If we will have, if you have anyone has any questions about either report, state report that you have questions about, we will address them.
Building report, other fees collected 65,053, which is far from the monthly average of 23,126. And I was just curious what that was.
So those are the fees that the village collects that has the public use fee, the early warning fee. Um, and those are all related to getting new homes. So, if you notice, we have 16 new, new units that all received fees. Uh, six of those are the first building in unit M. Um, so that's why that's on this one.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions about the reports? Awesome. Now we move back to accounts payable. If anyone have any questions on the high dollar amount for 190,000 dollars? Okay, so I will entertain a motion to, uh, pay, the accounts payable in the amount of 199.99.
Second.
Questions, comments? Ms. Paul Strini? Just checking. You, you take the moment.
Ms. Fuller.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Mr. Coth.
Hi.
Mr. Matt. Ms. Paul Stini.
Hi.
Mr. Robinson.
Hi.
Motion pass six, zero.
Okay, next, the regular accounts payable, much bigger amount. I expect questions.
Yep.
Ah, here they are.
Uh, this could be page one or 65 if you don't mind. Core and main fire hoses.
So those are being used to flush various pumps and those types of, uh, situations that the water, wastewater tubes, so. So they have, uh, they'll connect to a hydrant.
Do they have to meter their own water usage?
They do not.
So should we expect to see a lift on the lost water? Just.
It won't be, it won't be materially different, but it was.
Any other questions about the accounts payable?
Page six, page 69, the King County excavating. Check.
That's for the, uh, that's for the north south water connection. We got the next, next meeting and we'll check in the house.
That's it, okay, yeah.
Sometimes I pay attention, you just shock the heck out of me. People would be like, holy cow. Who doesn't just follow along on the agenda? Any other questions? Uh, hearing none, I will entertain, uh, the, to pay the regular accounts payable in the amount of 299,807.07 and seven cents. Questions, comments, concerns? Ms. Buck.
Mr. Coth.
Hi.
Mr. Matt.
Hi.
Ms. Paul Stini.
Hi.
Mr. Robinson.
Hi.
Ms. Fuller.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Motion pass zero.
Okay, next, for every other, uh, everybody's favorite time of the meeting, next to giving the awards to Chief, uh, let's talk about the Village Committee.
BDC. Uh, BDC will be the second, next day as always in September, so it'll be September 14, 6:30 here in Village Hall. Strategies, anything else to update for business development throughout the community?
I don't think so. I will be bringing, uh, two candidates forward for appointment at the next board meeting. Chairman Projekki had several applications in this last go around for, he had two positions on the BDC. We kept the position open, or kept the positions open so we could find the right people. Um, we have several applicants and trustee Projekki, or trustee chairman Projekki, uh, interviewed every candidate and has selected two for his team and they will be for the next board meetings.
I just, I just have an inquiring mind to want to know, because in the minutes when I read, we read it, it talked about the Rose Garden being leased for five years and it was breakfast, lunch, dinner. So I was just curious as to what kind of a restaurant?
So my understanding is that it would be, uh, American style breakfast and Hispanic lunch and dinner. That's my understanding. That's right. Yeah. And we, we bet the new, the, the Inlessees, they're already doing some demo work. And Hispanic lab. Yes. Actually, Mexican. Mexican, okay, there. I don't want to make any assumptions. And both of the owners own their own restaurants. This is a partnership together. So they're, they're experienced. And I know the community is talking a long time about wanting Mexican food restaurant in the downtown area, so now it is. Yesterday, I'm not sure what it will be, but I'm sure we will find out. Once the contractor gets started, uh, it should be moved pretty quick because they've already signed a lease, so they're paying rent.
Public relations?
We are supposed to be having a meeting next Thursday. Yeah, okay, just making sure. Okay, so next Thursday at 6:30 PM right here.
Motion.
That's all.
Trustee Coth.
Everybody's got the report and their packet. Any questions?
They were awesome. They were absolutely awesome for the touch truck. They were awesome for Coon Creek. They stood out there in the heat and they took everybody's kid and put it up in the rubber tire end loader that you wanted to ban. Real rave reviews from the kids.
Got a good crew. If any of the trustees have any free time, I urge you to go over there and watch that kid weld. I mean, he is not, at by 7:30 in the morning.
Put the helmet on.
By 7:30 in the morning, that kid is filthy, but he can weld and he saves this village a lot of money.
Honestly, truly, uh, as the weather starts to change here.
Adam.
And as the weather starts to change here, I encourage all the trustees to take a ride on a snowplow. Right, you're in the snowplow, not on top of.
Either way.
But I think it's really interesting to see what they see because it's, uh, it's really easy for, um, residents to critique or make suggestions on how things could be different, but they're not the, behind the wheel of the big trucks and stuff. And, I mean, I always go a ride along and you see the neighbors get mad and all that kind of stuff. It's really kind of entertaining. You know, because, I mean, it's tough. It's, it's hard, it's hard work, you know? And so I, I encourage all the trustees to go ride along this way.
I, I do want to let you know, trustee Coth, uh, after the parade, there was, uh, a lot of fun evidence that the kids enjoyed candy. Down State Street, uh, and then some vehicles. Flattened candy. And, uh, I have to say that the Streets Department did an amazing job. You should never amount to that. That's because of the new sweeper. Had the old sweeper been out there, it, it'd pick up three out of 100.
We, we, we can go out there and.
It's amazing. The difference between that day where it was evident everybody had an amazing time versus now, never again. So great job, Streets Department. Pretty wild.
Yeah.
Monsieur probably did that.
Yes.
Ms. Paul Strini?
Uh, no report.
New business or other announcements? I have one. Oh gee.
Can you not lease? Yeah. On September 11th, Sunday, uh, you're going to hear the roar of motorcycles. There will be a tribute to 9/11 coming through town, uh, becoming off of 72 around 11 o'clock in the morning. Several hundred motorcycles becoming up State Street, uh, to Allen, to Harmony Road, back up to McHenry County. Scooters too, or just motorcycle? Motorcycles. So it's, uh, they, they had a, a tribute, uh, several months ago and they were very impressed how the community of Hampshire came out at Allen and Harmony Road that they wanted to visit us again. So they come right down.
And that was cool last time.
Correct. So they put us on their, their route and I encourage everybody to step outside and find downtown if you can. Our partner will be there, PD will be there. So it'll be fun.
What time, what time?
It's like 11:15. We'd love.
Because Burlington has their parade that day.
Well, Burlington's going to miss out on a motorcycle.
Just curious about whether you're going one day.
From the east, south to State Street and then coming.
I have one announcement, whether he wants to share an announcement or a story, but I'm going to do it anyway because I'm into public shaming. Our little Josh is growing up. He, uh, you want to share your news? He wants me to do it for you on your behalf.
No, I'll do it. Uh, I'm just trying to remember if it was Saturday or Sunday because I took a long vacation this last weekend and I proposed to my girlfriend three years and she said yes, so we are engaged.
I got the picture, but it must get shared.
Um, I just, we have a Coon Creek. I just, I wanted to, um, thank the village for all their support, all the departments that stepped up, the police, the fire, the public works, the, you know, finance, I mean, everybody that came out for it, um, to support it. As well as the community itself for coming out to support it. Because you could put on a big party and if no one comes, it's not a success. Um, and everybody kind of stepping up really makes it such a community event and makes it successful. And so I just wanted to thank everyone for.
I'd like to pass that back to all of you because you fund the, you fund the, uh, good, these days, you allow our department, departments to work overtime and participate and, and they really enjoy it. So we appreciate all of your support. Also, they've been praying two years in a row now. Thank you.
I, I need to register the note from the chief there. Uh, our parking lot at Coon Creek, which I've never seen that many cars there. And I'm just wondering, had you noticed anything different this year in the amount of traffic?
No, it, uh, everything went very smoothly. You know, we had a couple of incidents down there, uh, but considering the, the, the crowd, uh, we did very well. It was all behaved. Uh, we had no incidents. Every, the Coon Creek Committee did their thing and they did it well. And, you know.
I saw your officer.
Just because.
I saw your officer was Chris. I heard you, I saw your officers like going down slides.
You knew that in slow time.
No, I'm telling you.
Everybody, you know, put their, their effort into it. Really went well.
I'm telling you, the officers really got to have some fun this year and, and the community really loves to see that.
I remember that you might have been behind that slide.
Nope, I had nothing to do with it on the night. I was sent the video after it already took place.
We also had an emergency situation that came about, um, an attendee that needed some assistance, um, with fire, paramedics and stuff. And the way they came in and addressed the situation, took care of it, it was so smooth that it didn't really interrupt anybody else. Everybody would decide to let them in. Um, and so I, you know, did see on Facebook that the, uh, the family was very grateful to the way that was.
One last thing, just to put Chief on the spot, I suppose. You have a favorite board meeting story? Now, this is your last.
Favorite?
Or least favorite, either one.
Well, you can tell a lot of those.
I mean, I think a lot of stories about the trustee or mayor.
Yeah, come on.
I really can't think of any that were memorable. I mean. I really can't think of any that were memorable. I mean. I think I, I, I didn't go off of that easily. No, it was.
He's going to stay true to the blue right to the end.
He still has to live here.
Exactly. But no, you guys have been wonderful. I'm really going to miss even this, even though it's kind of like, really? I, I still enjoy seeing you guys network. It's pretty cool and I wish more people would come down here and see them. Because you guys do put a lot of effort into what you do, more so than maybe other boards that I've seen, so. Appreciate it.
Do you want to hit the gab on?
Moving on.
Motion with you?
Second.
Questions, comments?
Four.
Ms. Clerk, can you just call a damn thing?
Mr. Solder.
Are you going to do it to pick another?
Mr. Kelly.
What?
Mr. Coles.
That's me, yeah, aye.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Mr. Paul Stine. First have to say wonderful job with all the corn oil stuff that you did too, so I wanted to make sure that that was recognized on the record. And yes, I'm sure. Mr. Robinson.
Aye.
Motion pass six zero.